Hello and welcome to Tuesday, July 18th, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Jordan Howe. I don't have my normal script in front of me this second, so the first thing we will do is discuss the minutes from last meeting. There was some discussion, Amanda had emailed us the minutes, and Montos had made some suggestions on changes of the minutes, and that's as far as we got. So Amanda, I believe you had asked our attorneys questions about some amendments? I don't know if you got those.
I did not get those, I apologize.
Okay. So the issue was what?
The revisions on them or in sections of the minutes where I took the language exactly from the resolution, and I wasn't sure if I should be changing that since it was the language of the resolution that was voted on.
We didn't vote on a resolution?
I don't know if I should be getting that.
You're talking about specifically the ones that were decided on, or the ones, not ones that are still pending?
Right.
It had to do with Willow Street, right?
Um, I don't know. I think a lot of this.
I mean, I have it in front of me if you want to talk through, right? So if we look at, I'll give you the ones that were adopted, just the fresh temperature going up, and the ones that so far are under discussion. But on page two, paragraph one, sentence two, it reads, "I re-signal architect for the applicant summarized the status of the project. Changes were made in response to some of the board's concerns." That one was made. My suggestion there was to add the word "some of the board's concerns," because prior, it just said "to the board's concerns," so I don't believe all board concerns were addressed.
Right.
That's why I wrote "some of."
"Some of," right.
So that one is proposed, adopted.
Okay.
Proposed, adopted, that one.
Which is, which is fine, as it reflects the status of, of what the applicant did in response.
Correct.
Great.
So I made seven suggestions in total. So suggestion two was page two, paragraph nine, sentence three. It reads, "There are a few, if any, other properties in the neighborhood with more than one main building on the lots." I thought "there are a few, if any" was a little bit somewhat contradictory and wasn't specific enough, so I suggest that it should read, "There are no other properties in the neighborhood with more than one main building on the lot, and where one of the buildings is a multifamily." That makes it more specific to the variance application. So I proposed that one. That one we need legal guidance on if it could be changed. That was not one.
So Amanda, the issue is, right, that the resolution was signed and submitted to yourself, right?
Yes.
Right. So the question, so the issue is, so post-meeting, right, so what happens is resolutions are drafted by George and then given to me, and I have to sign them, right? And so then I sign them, and they get filed with the city clerk, who's now Amanda. So they're filed, so that's filed. So I don't know, so the question is, right?
So we haven't voted on the resolution?
No, we, we have.
Yeah, we did.
The vote was taken.
Right.
The vote was taken.
Because we printed one, two.
Right. So it's, so the fundamental question is, should the minutes reflect something else than what, like, so the resolution is drafted, you know, by George and theory?
What are your thoughts on the way it's written?
I, I think it's fine as written. I just, but Amanda, just to be clear, your recitation in the minutes tracks the exact wording of the resolution as signed? Is it, okay, yeah, I would, I would, I would keep both intact.
Okay. So the first one, we adopted, that wasn't in the resolution.
Right, yeah.
So the third one is page two, paragraph nine, sentence four, it says, "This change would be adding a primary residence on a lot where there's already two-family dwelling." So what I had suggested was it should read, "This change would be adding an additional primary residence on a lot where there's already a two-family dwelling," to be more specific.
Right. But again, the resolution, if I'm, yeah, so I would, I would, I would do it as the same, I mean, it, it's a good point from a drafting standpoint, but I don't think it affects the integrity of the resolution.
The next one I'm okay with, I won't even, I had suggested to strike out page two, paragraph 10, sentence two, because I thought it set a potential of false expectation, but I'm okay with the way it's written, it's all right, we'll ignore that one. Then one that was adopted was page 10, paragraph 15, sentence two. It reads, "The board intended to close the public hearing on the interpretation only, leaving the public hearing open on any request for variances." I just suggested it should read, "The board closed the public hearing on the interpretation only, period," and just leave it at that.
I, my preference on that is, is to actually go with the former, which is to say we closed on the interpretive but left everything open.
Yeah.
And I do that because the public hearing notice that was initially adopted was for all, all three strands of relief sought by the applicant.
Got it.
The interpretation, the area variance, and the use, and we only closed on the interpretation. I think just in order, I think the applicant probably understands where we are and where we stand, but for the public as well, just that they understood that these other two components remain out there.
All right. But other than that, I don't have any suggestions how we make a motion to adopt or accept the minutes.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to go into executive session for advice of counsel, please?
Motion to go into executive session.
Motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll be back.
(pause) Success.
We're not gonna knock that glass up in Georgia.
Oh, no?
You can't?
Well, I, yeah.
I'm gonna forget about that.
Yeah. All right, no problem. Can I have a motion to reconvene after executive session, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so just to recap where we have been, we had a public hearing last month on the issue of three different interpretations of the building code by the building inspector. We had directed, closed the public hearing on that issue only, and directed our attorney to draft a resolution based on that discussion. The applicant, post-public hearing, had submitted a supplemental submission on those issues. The public continued to submit comments to our secretary on those issues. They are all in the record and on the city's website to view, and at this time, the board is prepared to move forward with voting on the resolution that was prepared by our attorney on those issues, and we're going to do that and then move forward with the meeting, so...
Just if I may, for the record, we haven't had the opportunity to review the resolution, which are typically posted before meetings, so the applicant hasn't had an opportunity to review that, so we might suggest adjourning any deliberation on the resolution, or at least providing time for the applicant to review same.
It's, it's a resolution voting on an interpretation, an interpretation that's the board's alone. It's been distributed to the board. I think the board's in a position to vote on it. I, I don't think there's anything for the applicant to add or, or take from a decision that is inherently the board's to make.
Understood, but we did provide a submission to the board, which we noted at the last meeting that we would discuss, so we do, we would respectfully request the opportunity to, at the minimum, present on the one issue that was outstanding, because there was information not discussed at that meeting regarding the one-year ceasing of a, a, a use, when a use no longer is on the property for a year, it ceases. So there was a specific discussion that needed to be, I think, fleshed out with the board. I don't know if your resolution covers each other?
It doesn't cover that issue. The resolution ties directly to the three, the three bases articulated by the building inspector in terms of...
Understood, and our submission distinguished the provision that the board is considering, which is whether or not the use ceases when there's a 50% destruction of a building, and how that particular provision, which I'm referring to, the ceasing, the one-year provision, which is two, I can tell you the two sections, 2310C and 2310D, and I have a visual, a particular handout that I can provide that just lays out those distinguishing points, because rather than having litigation with the city, we're expecting an issue, because that will be the inevitable piece of this, I think it's important that we do discuss that point, because they are very distinguishable, and I think the board doesn't have that benefit of that information. We did include it in our submission.
If you want to present on it, you can present on it. I, I just, I, I don't see how, you know, we closed the public hearing, we closed the public hearing on that issue. We have an additional submission. We've, we've taken it into consideration, and a decision's being issued by the board on an interpretation that the board, it's, it's in the board's hands to make.
Now, I seek leave from the chairman just for a brief presentation on these points. Certainly, I defer to the board, you know, again, it's a presentation on a particular issue that is, is entirely distinguishes this section of the code from what I believe is being improperly interpreted as a ceasing of the use.
We know it's not a brief presentation if it's you, Taylor.
I can speak very quickly.
(inaudible) presentation.
Was that four? The, the three things that we interpreted, was it? Still water on the phone. Is it representing?
Okay.
Thank you, and again, I appreciate that, and of course, the county and council's review here. So at the last meeting, we did have a straw poll which mentioned the three different points of the building inspector's determinations, the two different determinations. The one that remained sort of an open discussion, or that the board was upholding, so to speak, was section 223-10D.
So what I have, you all, so I'll just pass it, I'll just pass out, did you actually email and ask these out? Sorry, sorry for your job. This just falls along with our letter, but it, it allows us to look directly at the code provisions highlighted specifically to these exact points. As we pointed out at the last meeting, section 223-10D, the one remaining provision of the code, merely concerns the restoration of damaged buildings. The whole reason why I'm here tonight is the one point, is that this use, they're, okay, there, one was also provided to the madam clerk and the board's counsel, so it will be posted to the website. It's all just zoning code provisions, sections that are in the city zoning code. There is no new information there. Section 223-10D only speaks to restoration of buildings when it concerns buildings either destroyed more than 50% or less than 50%. This section is not discussing termination or ceasing of a use. All I'm here tonight is this one provision, and this does not end the use on the property. There is a separate section in this same non-conforming use and non-conforming building section of the code that speaks to ceasing, when a use ceases. If a building is destroyed, such as in this instance, if it's not continued, meaning it's not rebuilt and continued for that use, after one year, the use is gone. By no means does section D, 223D, discontinue the use, and I'll highlight that now based on your code provisions, which you have before you. So the handout you have starts with the words, the definitions in your code of building and use, just to show, again, they're very different things in the zoning code. A non-conforming building, think of setbacks, the building height, a building may have been five stories, no longer permitted, non-conforming building. A use, an SRO, which is the instant matter here, not permitted anywhere in the city of Beacon Mall, that's a non-conforming use. So non-conforming building, non-conforming use. It then goes on to provide the relevant sections, so that the handout is for you, all the lines again directly with our application, so these are just the highlighted points. That distinguishes Beacon's non-conforming use and structures sections with other codes in the city, in other cities throughout the Hudson Valley, that we incorporated to help, again, illustrate when a community tries to remove a use, they explicitly provide for it, but typically it ceases when it's no longer in operation for a year, and that's how it's handled. The code provision we're dealing with tonight, the one that the board held up is saying, "We'd like you to direct a resolution to prepare upholding that determination." The issue of, that issue deals with a non-conforming building, not a non-conforming use. We have been damaged more than 50%. There's two code sections that we'll go through now. So page four of the handout, excerpt of the zoning codes, but before, before we get to that, 223-10D is entitled Restoration of Buildings, so this is page two of your, of your handout. The regulation concerning non-conforming buildings, in particular, relates to buildings destroyed by more than 50%. That doesn't terminate the use. In 223-10D, there are two sentences that we're talking about. "If non-conforming building shall be destroyed by any means to the extent of more than 50%," which is the instance here, "no repairs or reconstruction shall be made unless every portion of such building is made to conform to all the regulations of this chapter for the district in which it's located." That's section one, that applies, that's sentence one. The next sentence does incorporate the word "use," and that's because the building in that instance is destroyed less than 25%. So when a building is destroyed less than 20, excuse me, 50%, when a building is destroyed less than 50%, the clock, this, this ceasing of a non-conforming use, doesn't start, because you're just preparing the use. The use is being continued, half of that building is probably still in operation. They're very distinguishable. The important thing to note is that second sentence. It says, "Where the destruction of such non-conforming building is less than 50%, it may be restored and," this is where the key is, "and the non-conforming use continued." When you compare those two sentences, that sentence notes the word "use," doesn't apply to this project, we, we're destroyed more than 50%. The section we're talking about, where the building is destroyed more than 50%, it only speaks to the building, and that's because when you read it in concert with section 223-10C, which is a provision that deals with regulating of non-conforming buildings, excuse me, non-conforming uses, it speaks to the, this exact instance of when a use ceases for more than a year. So if we look at 223-10C, which is at the bottom of that same page that you're reviewing, so that you have it all in one page, it notes that it says "non-conforming use of structures." Not "non-conforming structures," "non-conforming uses of structures." We, we talked about the difference between the use and the buildings. 223-10C explicitly provides that when a non-conforming use of a building ceases for any reason for a continuous period of more than one year, then any future use must be in conformity with the current zoning code. That code section is not, is not a determination of the building inspector, because of course it applies. So here, 223, section D, the provision that's left for you all to make a determination tonight, does not speak to use. That's because 223-10C does. In our instance, the building is destroyed more than 50%, so as a consequence, the applicant has one year from that destruction so as to rebuild this use for it to be continuing. If they don't do it with one year, use is gone, end of story. This code was written that way, and that's important to note. When you look at other codes, which are at the end of your, your packet, of course, now I no longer have one, but if you look at those sections from Yonkers, Poughkeepsie, and I look at White Plains, you'll see, as highlighted, each one of those code sections amalgamates or combines each of these provisions into one provision, and says that if a building is destroyed more than 50% in those codes, it says the use and the building, so both pieces, need to be in compliance, and then also will provide that same provision within one year and so forth. So other codes explicitly regulate those two key words, building and use together. This code, on its face, crystal clear when you, when you read section, sentences one and two, only one of those two sentences says that the use may continue or not continue, and that's not the provision that's applied to this project. So I know I said I keep it brief, so I'm gonna leave it there, but most importantly, all we're suggesting is, that section that the building sector is relying on, it applies to the project in that the building was destroyed more than 50%. So the determination that's appropriate is that if that applies to this project or this property, then the applicant has one year so as to build and to maintain that use on the site where the use is gone. But it doesn't terminate the use, and that was the misappropriation by the building inspector in this section. So that's, that's, the key caveat here is just that one piece. The use doesn't terminate except if it disappears for a year, or ceases operations for a year. So I just want to make that point very clear, and I, again, I appreciate, you know, you all listening, but that point was not discussed more fully with the board, because again, the issues are there, but I think it's important to highlight how the code protects that issue, and it was exclusively and implicitly removed and not included, and when there is any ambiguity, which, this is not ambiguous, this is plain reading, that word "use" is not included, then it has to be read in favor of the property owner. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone from the public will now be permitted to speak specifically to Mr. Palmer's comments on what he just presented. There'll be an opportunity to speak later, assuming we get into the variance request, so if anyone has any comment to rebut.
Do we have to reopen the public hearing?
I mean, I think we kinda already did, but unofficially.
He started speaking, he's, he's a couple over here.
Michael Mart, Mid Avenue. So my first comment is procedural, because Mr. Palmer was told, I don't know why it's making that noise, am I too close to the mic?
You could hear.
Was, it was made very clear to Mr. Palmer that he has to state all his arguments related to this interpretation last month, and that he will not be able to add additional arguments, which is exactly what he's doing with this. He saw that you guys were leaning towards not accepting the things that he came up with last time, so he added another thing. In terms of, like, grokking this thing in five seconds, like, even with the handout, honestly, it's a little bit hard to comprehend for me, so I don't have rebuttal to the content, but I, I take issue with the procedural, the procedure. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all right. With that, we will do what I said we were gonna do originally, which is to vote on the resolution as to each section of the code that was argued, so... Are we, board, are we ready?
I'm sorry.
Ready, just wanted to make sure we're ready to proceed.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so this first vote will be as to whether to uphold the determination of the building inspector pursuant to city code subsection 223-10.C5. And I will call the roll. Stowe?
Yes.
You, you...
To uphold or deny, or to overturn?
I gotta, I gotta reorganize my mind about whether to, yes.
Point of information, can I have a copy to use for this? Is there a copy available? Okay. It wasn't as of an hour ago.
It's when I come back here tonight, I agree with what I said, so there is a copy of it.
Okay.
Do you wanna, I mean, I want, I want mine, obviously, to read off of, but I don't know.
And Judd needs his, yeah.
I don't have a, yeah.
Okay, all right, I'll, all right.
Okay, so Stowe, you're, you're a nay, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Judy?
Nay.
Montos?
I to uphold the building inspector.
And Elaine?
Nay.
And I am a nay on 223-10.C5. As to whether the determination of the building inspector pursuant to city code 223-10.C2, Stowe?
Nay.
Judy?
Nay.
Montos?
Nay.
Elaine?
Nay.
And I am a nay. And then finally, as to whether to uphold the determination of the building inspector pursuant to city code 223-10.D, Stowe?
Yay.
That's an aye?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Montos?
I to uphold the building inspector.
Elaine?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Taylor, you can have my copy now if you'd like.
That's all right, you can give it.
And the resolution also incorporates and adopts a written decision.
Yeah, and, and the resolution will incorporate and adopt a written decision that was prepared, which will be filed with the city clerk, and of course, we'll give a copy to the applicant. With that, the applicant has also applied for an area and use variance, an area variance, and then the, and the second alternative, a use variance. We will let him speak on that, but Judd, I believe you wanted to speak to the applicant.
We're, we're prepared to entertain both, if you're prepared to go tonight.
Well, probably just, I think we're just gonna adjourn. I just, I know for the, yeah, we'll simply adjourn. I'll note for the record that all, as noted by the board, all of the material that was submitted and considered this evening is part of the record for the eventual appeal of, of that determination.
It is all being, it, yeah, and as Jordan said at the outset, we will incorporate it into the record.
Yep.
We'll get you a copy of the decision. I do want to talk, I will have a discussion with you about the timing of, of the filing of this with the city clerk.
Exactly.
Because I think that relates to...
This, other components.
The other piece.
Yep.
And finally, with regard to the area variance, we are asking, as for supplemental submission, just detailing why this particular...
Yeah, we're gonna have to amend it related to the first two determinations, and then...
Exactly, and, and just, yeah.
It applies to the, to D.
So I, I mean, I just wanna, I want to tell you that that's an issue that we were looking at in light of what's just happened.
Understood, and I think that's appropriate, and that's why I think tonight doesn't make a lot of sense to go through the extent of...
So we'll just continue the public hearing.
We'll continue the hearing, yeah. If, if, I defer to the chair if he wants to entertain comments, but otherwise, again, the application is going to be adjusted to reflect the determination.
Sure. So just, just for the benefit of the public, what occurred right now was, we agreed with the building inspector on one of his reasonings to deny the applicant to rebuild. The applicant will most likely appeal that, but beyond that, in front of our board, will submit, or has submitted, an area and use variance. They are now asking for a continuation to amend based on what occurred today, because they didn't know it was gonna happen today until it happened. And so what was noticed, though, was an area and use variance for tonight as well. So what I would say to the public is, if you came to speak and you don't think that you can, will be able to speak at a later meeting, after the applicant has actually presented, you're welcome to speak tonight. I would say that if you anticipate that you will be able to speak after the applicant actually presents their arguments for an area and use variance, that would probably be the most helpful, as there's really, they haven't presented their argument on those points yet, and so you'll, I mean, you're more than welcome, again, to present your opinion of the five, the five factors in the area case, and the four factors in the use case, but for me, I think it would be useful to almost attempt to rebut the applicant after they apply. Again, but if someone will not be able to be here, they're more than welcome to speak now on those issues, and so I'd welcome anyone who would like to do that to do so at this time. And if you could state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Joe Malandrucolo, 66 Sergeant Avenue. My only comment at this time, and I will be back, because my house is adjacent, right behind the property, one, that the board stick to some sort of protocol with these adjournments, postponements, so that the council doesn't seem to be doing things on the fly. I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, okay, but it just seems like, we're like, okay, we'll do it next time, oh, we'll do it next time, okay, and we keep showing up. And two...
So, what I would say to the public is, if you came to speak and you don't think that you can, will be able to speak at a later meeting after the applicant has actually presented, you're welcome to speak tonight. I would say that if you anticipate that you will be able to speak after the applicant actually presents their arguments for an area and use variance, that would probably be the most helpful, as there's really, they haven't presented their argument on those points yet, and so, you'll, I mean, you're more than welcome, again, to present your opinion of the five, the five factors in the area case and the four factors in the use case. But, for me, I think it would be useful to almost attempt to rebut the applicant after they apply. Again, but if someone will not be able to be here, they're more than welcome to speak now on those issues. And so, I'd welcome anyone who would like to do that to do so at this time. And if you could state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Joe Malandrucklow, 66 Sargent Avenue. My only comment at this time, and I will be back because my house is adjacent, right behind the property. One, that the board stick to some sort of protocol with these adjournments, postponements, so that the council doesn't seem to be doing things on the fly. I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, okay, but it just seems like, we're like, okay, we'll do it next time, oh, we'll do it next time, okay. And we keep showing up. And two, nothing related to anything, but, and I don't even know who to call, but can somebody get a lawnmower on the property, because it's starting to look like a jungle? Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Um, so, we own...
You just state your name for the record, sorry.
It's Bridget Karamagna. We own 930 Woolcott, which is the brick house directly across the street.
Thank you.
I've lived in that house since 2005. I'm sure the police would know, I've been witness to, over the years, gang fights, knife fights, um, all of it, I've seen it all on that property. Our home has been hit multiple times by cars, our neighbor was, a bullet went through their window. So, it's just generally, I'm here just to say that, you know, in the community, it's known as the most dangerous intersection in Beacon, and now my parents are living in that home, they're reaching 80, and it's just, it's a lot. So, we would hope for a quieter intersection, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at this point? All right, so, I will take a motion to continue the public hearing on Agenda Item Number One until August, please.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to open a public hearing on Agenda Item Number Two?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, again.
Good evening. For the record, Taylor Palmer with Love Room of Cuddy and Fader on behalf of the applicant. You may be remembering from such films as The Last Application. Tonight, I'm joined by the project architect, Jaclyn Tyler of Nexus Creative, and the property owners are also with us this evening, I'm sorry. As this is the first time for your board tonight, in connection with this application, it is on for a public hearing, as the chairman mentioned, I will provide a brief background regarding the project and the property and the limited nature of the variance application that's before you, which is specifically for a terrace retaining wall on the otherwise zoning compliant project. As Jaclyn's loading up the toggle, by a procedural background on this project, the applicant is seeking a site plan approval and a lot merger or subdivision approval, proposing to develop the property for a proposed mixed-use development at 152 to 158 Fishkill Avenue. Some of you might know that as Double D's auto across from the Valero Gas Station and the Blue House, which is the apartment building. Before I turn it over to Jaclyn, as I mentioned, for the benefit of the board and the public, there are two lots involved in the overall application, 158 Fishkill Ave., which is Double D's, and then 152 Fishkill Ave., so just over an acre for the development site. The property is in the city's transitional zone, and it is not in the historic district, overlay district. As noted, it is located in proximity of Valero Gas Station, and the surrounding area includes multifamily, high-density multifamily, including 31 Hamilton-Bish Plaza, which is the 70-plus units, townhomes, single-family residential, gas station, other mixed and commercial uses, transitional being sort of the main street, CMS transition into what's, in this instance, surrounds, is multifamily zoning, there's no single-family zoning surrounding us. Jaclyn's gonna go into this in more detail in just a minute, but at a high level, the new building program includes a new mixed-use building with office space on the first floor, and then 16 residential units on the upper floors, two of those apartments, in conformance with the code, will be low-market rate units, the city's affordable housing law. There is a rooftop terrace proposed, and it will be available for the residents of the property. The project is otherwise zoning compliant, that includes relating to off-street parking, and will also be providing, in conformance with the city's new main street, or in this instance, the Fishkill Avenue rehabilitation project, so they're adding new parking on street as well. So, there's off-street and on-street proposed, but it's zoning compliant parking. The application has been on review at the planning board for a few months, and we addressed a number of the board's comments before coming to you all on referral from, with a positive recommendation from the planning board, which included a reduced, reduction in the building height. Originally, the building proposed would have necessitated a variance from you all because of a funky two-and-a-half-story calculation, but we worked that out with the building inspector, and that's been addressed, and the building height has been reduced even below what's permitted. Interestingly enough, as you reduce the building height, it actually increases the retaining wall height, so, that's funny how those things sort of go hand-in-hand. The planning board last week adopted a seeker negative declaration, so the seeker process is complete, it was a coordinated review. And again, what's interesting is, this is really a first impression application for me in the city, as there haven't been other retaining wall matters before you. I believe the building inspector might be the first to have cited this code section, so you might be seeing more of these coming to the theater near you, because I can name five projects off the top of my head that have larger retaining walls that weren't before this board. They'll, they'll remain a secret, two of them are in the application. Specifically, the applicant is seeking an area variance for the retaining wall height. The height has been substantially reduced from what we originally proposed, and otherwise, we did mitigate that through the secret process, and the secret negative declaration identifies how it does not have an impact on community character. And again, we've designed this, and what you'll see, even in addition to what you've had in your packet, we've incorporated some softening techniques to the wall, we've terraced the wall, we've added landscaping, you'll now see the actual technique used to do that, now with the suggestion of the planning board. So, while the average retaining wall height on this site is just over six feet, just under six and a half feet is the average height of the wall where it is on the property itself, the relief we're seeking overall is 15.4 feet, so no taller than 15.4, and that's only in a specific point of the site plan, which Jaclyn will review with you all. So, the retaining wall height for our project actually started at 20.6 feet, and with building height reductions, site plan changes, parking lot adjustments, all other jazz we did during the secret process, it was reduced down to a maximum height of 15.4 at a specific point. There are two other sections that have maximum heights of 9.1 and 7.5, and Jaclyn's visual will kinda give you an representation of what it will look like. It's being landscaped by Deborah Adamson, another local Beacon landscape designer, who has helped to do a number of these, and has done this throughout. Importantly, the only way you're really gonna see this coming into the site is quite literally when you're driving in. So, the building itself, on Fishkill Avenue, as you come off of, off of Main Street, it really is screening the building, or, excuse me, screening the area of where these retaining walls are, which is in the parking area. The topography of the site makes it certainly unique, so this is not applicable to every site. So, this is really a way to make sure that the building, which is not even being built to its maximum density, can be built in a way that meets the building height requirements, and otherwise addresses all, as I said, all other zoning requirements have been met. So, we did include in our June 27 submission more a full breakdown of its, of how we believe that the project satisfies the five factors supporting the project, but I'll have Jaclyn now go through some of those visuals with you to help you see how we've incorporated that in the project.
Does anyone have a copy of the, the letter from the planning board?
No.
And do you have it? Do you have it, do you have a digital copy? Okay.
It's in the midst.
We know it exists.
So, you have, I have heard of them issuing a positive recommendation, I have a letter.
Okay, all right.
And I can't confirm that the neg deck was issued by the planning board last week.
Okay.
So, secret reviews completed.
I'll play the video of the positive.
You have it? 'Cause I couldn't find it online, it wasn't posted.
It was coordinated, it was posted, because it was five hours ago, so it took five, four days to post.
Well, Amanda was there, so we'll... So, negative deck and, and positive recommendation for the variances from, from the planning board. All right. Hi.
Good evening. Hopefully, we are not here five hours tonight. My name is Jaclyn Tyler with Nexus Creative. Taylor went through almost everything, but I will go through some general, specific information on the site. As Taylor mentioned, we were able to eliminate the need for the roof variance, which we were originally requesting with the building height. We worked with the planning board over the last few months to work with the site. As you've probably reviewed the site, what I wanna point out is that in the top corner, we have a grade of 170 compared to the lower right-hand corner of 144.7. So, essentially, we have basically roughly a 25-foot grade difference between the two corners of the site. So, we've worked with Mike from Arden Consulting very specifically in order to achieve the best possible layout for this site. One of the requests that came from the planning board was for us to lower the building, the ground level of the building, they wanted us to move it as low as we could to the street level. So, originally, we started at a floor level of 153. At the same time, the walls, as Taylor mentioned, were much higher in the back, we had not terraced this top left corner, as well as this back corner. So, with the, with removing the 153 and lowering that down to 151 feet, although we did increase theoretically the height by two feet, we were able to tier those walls, resulting in a lower height variance for the corner, right at this corner, right here, you can see it, is 165.8, that's the highest point, which I'll show you in a visual in a minute, but that is the highest location. As Taylor mentioned, everything that is not circled in red on this site plan now is in full compliance. The red areas are outside of compliance, and they vary with what their heights are. So, we were able to meet the planning board's requests. The other determining factor on this, when looking at the drainage, is the fact that we were not able to lower the building any lower than 151 feet due to the slope required for the drainage. So, that was our lowest height that we were able to achieve, and from that 151 was how we worked the back, the back end. I do wanna flip over to this, so as I mentioned, this is the largest height variance request that we are asking for, it's over in the corner of the tiering. We weren't able to continue that tiering further, given the fact that it would impact the number of parking spaces, which, as Taylor mentioned, we are currently compliant with. The other corners are in the back, back along here, and in this corner right here, in the red, it's, it's very minimal along the back. Again, this is all based on the adjacent grade, so we're not obviously able to impact the surrounding, we're basically at the property line in order to achieve the parking required for this property. We are introducing a textured wall, but what I would like to point out is that within limited time, what you see here is the vegetative growth that's at the top of the wall, will eventually fill the entire wall, so that whole wall will be more of a vegetative wall, rather than what you're seeing currently in this image, but we wanted to show you what it would look like at the install.
Can you orient us as far as where that is relative to Fishkill Ave.?
Yep. So, that is standing, let's just say, at these ADA spaces here roughly, in this drive aisle, and...
You're gesturing something, I can't see it.
Oh, it's not showing, okay.
So, Fishkill Ave. is right down here, you come into the site here, retaining walls looking at all the landscape planning, are basically what you're looking at with these plans.
Yep.
So, Fishkill Ave., Main Street's here, basically along CMS here, comes in the site. The building really blocks most of what you would see from any van, toy, gas station here. The point where you're gonna see this and the angles that you're seeing in the plans are either from the parking lot itself, or driving directly into the site.
Correct.
And, just another question. Taylor had said, I think I understood you, that there's an inverse with building height to retaining wall height.
Yes.
Can you just explain why, what?
So, that, so that's what I was explaining, the further we drop that building down, the greater the retaining wall, retaining wall height increases. So, for instance, this grade of 170, that's held, we can't do anything at that corner. If we continue to lower this down to, let's say, 150, we've now added another foot in regards to that retaining wall, because the entire parking lot would need to shift down in order to have the, one of the entrances off this rear part where they, where one of the ADA accesses are. So, the further we drop that down, the further the increase in the height in the back corner.
So, you're saying, actually, if you drop the building, you're dropping the level...
The grade level, correct.
...of the wall, which is still at the same physical height of...
Maintains that.
But it's a foot longer now.
Correct.
It's holding the base another foot in.
Exactly, so that would...
And you're stuck with that because that height of where the land is belongs to another property.
It, it meets the adjoining property, so obviously, we don't, we can't alter that at that corner, it would impact the surrounding neighborhoods.
That's, that's the hill of change, right?
Correct, right. And so, that 151 was determined, as I mentioned, it was a, it was a compromise with the drainage that is on-site and how we can make the connections into the street, as well as a compromise in the fact that we mentioned to the board, the further we go down, what we're explaining to you, the larger of a variance we are requesting, and we're trying to keep that request as minimal as possible. So, I believe with our conversations, we met their requirements as far as lowering the building as far as we could, we've minimized the number of steps at the entrance so that it's down lower, closer to the street level. So, just to flip back, as, as Taylor mentioned, this is looking more towards that hill right here in that corner, so this is that tiered portion. In, right, we're in the parking lot, so you can't see this from the street, as you said, unless you're right at the entrance pulling in. And this is standing at the back of the building, looking back towards that, that corner, towards this back corner. Can't see my mouse, can you, over here?
In those pictures, do you, if you could go back to them?
Yep.
Do you know which portions of the wall are actually in violation?
So, do you see this orange line?
Yes.
I can zoom in on it.
Taylor could replace Vanna, maybe. For now.
She is. Do you see that orange line? I'll zoom in on there.
Yeah, okay.
So, everything above, that's the six-foot reference line, so on this image, it's anything above that. This corner, like I mentioned, this is very minimal along the back end, and at the entrance area, this is the parking along the entrance. This right side is the greatest.
Got it.
That's where the 15-foot request is for.
And, so I just have a question for Bruce, sorry, sorry for, like, taking over this application. Bruce, what is the purpose of this section as far as, why does it exist?
I'm not sure. Honestly, I'm not sure. They're probably, because they, probably at some point, they didn't want people to build retaining walls to raise their property up and above, you know, their neighbors, I guess, in some cases. The higher you go, the more, you know, especially in a residential neighborhood on a tight property, you know, you're looking at, you know, you, you build a wall on a property, you're basically looking at the neighbor. The six-foot also falls in line with the fence code.
Right.
It's actually in the same section, so fences are only allowed a maximum height of six feet. So, it's probably just to keep it, you know, in similar, you know, similar terms.
Right, so this could look completely different, obviously, in a residential neighborhood, on a single-family home than it would on a, on a project, okay.
Well, if it was a wall as opposed to a retaining.
Sure.
It's a wall or fence, right? The fence, the section is literally called Walls and Fences.
Awesome. Okay. I'm done with my questions for now, anybody else? All right, anyone from the public wish to speak on this application? Okay. Anything else the applicant would like to add?
That was it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Can I borrow your draft resolution?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing on Agenda Item Number Two, please?
Motion to close.
Motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will go through the...
Give me one second.
Yep, probably. I appreciate, I appreciate it.
There you go, yeah.
You don't need me to, yeah, we're just, we're just gonna go through, so we're gonna go through, yeah, we'll go through the factors, yep, so, where are they? Here they are, all right. We're gonna, we're gonna discuss the factors as we always do, all right. So, as to whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance, discuss, please.
No, I don't think so. I don't think an undesirable change will be produced.
As long as they got, they have a neg, neg deck from the planning board, and other properties aren't gonna be affected, I don't see it as a bad effect on the neighborhood.
Do we have any correspondence or anything like that from the people whose properties are going to have that retaining wall?
There was nothing received regarding this application.
Thanks.
I did get a notice to my house because I live close. Yeah, I have nothing to say.
I think it's fine, but the, the neighborhood would be fine. And, and you're stuck with the topography of the grounds.
I concur. As to whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible to the applicant to pursue that does not require the area variance, Stowe?
No, I don't think so.
Judy?
I agree, I guess the engineers on the project and the, the planning board would know that that's the height that's needed, so, that's needed.
Am I right? I would agree. I would agree with all points stated.
I would also agree. They've already, already adapted certain things to lessen the amount of the variance.
I think that they've done their work, and this is what they came with, and this is the best they can do. As to whether the applicant, as to whether the request of the variance is substantial, the board finds that.
Am I right? I don't think it's substantial.
I do, but I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I think it's their only alternative.
I don't think it's substantial.
I agree with Elaine. I think it is substantial, but I don't think there's any way around it.
Stowe?
I don't think it's substantial because in order to do anything useful with the space, you'd have to have a retaining wall, because there's a hill there, so...
Yeah, I think out of context, it could be considered substantial, you know, mathematically, again, by reading the code, as we always say. I think, you know, in context to this project, it's not substantial. As to whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, the board finds that. Judy?
No, I don't think it will have a negative effect. I think as a matter of fact, probably going to have a positive effect on that particular area.
I agree with that. You know, I agree with that as well, especially with the rendering. I think they're taking all measures to make it appealing, per se.
I agree. I don't think it will have a detrimental effect.
Yeah, I agree. I think the Wrigley Field look will be wonderful. And as to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, Stowe?
This is one that I always have... I mean, in a sense, it's always self-created, so yes, it's...
Maybe not. Yeah, self-created.
Yeah, I'm going to say it's not self-created.
Not self-created?
Or not self-created.
There we go.
Rebelled.
Well, I mean, to achieve what they want to achieve...
But for a limitation in the zoning code.
Yeah.
It's self-created. Sorry.
It is.
And for the record, where it's not determinative, it's based on all the factors, yada, yada.
And then, as to whether this is the minimum variance necessary and adequate to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and health, safety, and welfare of the community...
I think it's the minimum that they need, yes.
I'll agree with that. Yeah, not being this type of engineer, I would have to call on the experts and think it's the minimum.
Yes, I agree.
I would agree as well, and then, of course, are, you're aware of our normal restrictions and conditions. Are you able, I assume, probably not, but I assume you'll accept the normal conditions and then potentially back for extension requests at some point.
Unfortunately, yes. Yes, we can. We haven't reviewed the resolution, but understanding that they typically require two years from the final approval, things that in fact usually line up with the planning board reso. So, yes, it's not, it, yes.
And the applicant has no problem paying her fees?
There is no problem. I almost had trouble, like, remember Boyd trying to say yes or no to that question? No problem paying the fees. Yes, no problem.
Excellent, all right. And so, I will take a call, oh, can, actually, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to, can I have a motion on this?
Motion to approve the variance as requested.
Motion, can I have a second?
Sec.
Second, all right, and I will call the roll. Stowe?
Yes.
Yes, Judy?
Aye.
Montos?
Aye.
Elaine?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
Thank...
One for two.
That's until we get rid of reverse number one. But I had my one joke that I got to, I didn't get to say early on because we jumped right into that resolution. I said, I see that you have the B-team here because the senior partner's on vacation, so thank you to junior counsel.
He gets to go to Greece and I get to be...
I, the managing partner of the firm here covering the meeting, as the, as the youth of the firm get to go out to Greece, so, you know.
Well, we appreciate Judd being here and his wise counsel.
Yeah, he's the best.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job, lads.
Yay.
Amanda, is this it?